Four, could you join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Thank you. I'd like to give notice that we did just prior to the meeting have an executive session to discuss personnel and legal issues. I would also like to, before we start, welcome Ken Froelich back. We're very happy that you're here, and we've missed you. All right. We're going to start off with a presentation from the Shade Tree Committee. Mr. Reiser, you want to take the podium?
Madam President, do you mind if I say a couple of words before?
I'd be more than happy to have you say something, Mr. Foster, sorry.
Thank you. The presentation that Mr. Reiser is about to give, I'm not going to go too much into detail with the update. I'll let him unveil all that. But what I will say is this update went before the Shade Tree Commission. Several times it was reviewed, so we had to go over that multiple times. And the whole commission, committee had agreed with these updates that have come forward. And then after that process, we also had to go before Township Manager, Mr. White, to make sure everything came across and made sense, which it did. And then the final step was also speaking with the Township Solicitor and making sure that everything was good on that end. So this presentation that you're about to see has been thoroughly vetted, and we are very proud of it. It also went before the Township Arboretum, because some of this pertained to me and him with some of these changes. So with no further ado, I'll give the attention over to Mr. Reiser, please.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. And Ian, if you're behind the curtain, if you could, look at that. Thank you very much. So, good evening. Seth Reiser, Chair of the Shade Tree Commission. So this evening, we have just a couple of ordinance updates to propose. And again, just reminding of our mission, we're responsible for the protection, preservation, and growth of the township's tree canopy. So the two ordinance updates for consideration this evening, canopy protection and ash tree clarification is the purpose of these. The first one in regards to canopy protection. So really, the preface of this particular update is twofold. One is to define the fee in lieu of amounts for compensatory tree replacements. And then number two is to update the tree replacement formula to clarify language and discourage clearing a high percentage of trees relative to the total number of trees on a lot. As we know, there's been a lot of development in the township over the past five years, and this isn't necessarily meant to prevent that, but it's really meant to uphold our mission of what the Shade Tree Commission is all about. So the fee in lieu of, so in the tree ordinance today, the word fee in lieu of is mentioned several times, six in total, but it all references back to really a single section, which is this section here, and we'll get to the specific update here in a second. And also, the replacement formula. So if you're not familiar with this, dependent upon the amount of trees being removed on your property, we do have a replacement formula based off of the DBH. So that's just some grounding information as we're looking at the actual update here. So the proposed update is two items. Everything that has been changed in this section is highlighted in yellow. So the first one is adding the addition of a modified replacement formula based on the amount of trees that are being removed on the lot. So really, it comes down to if you're removing 50% of the total trees on the lot or fewer, then we stick with the formula as it exists. And if you're removing more than 50% of the trees on a lot, there is a modified replacement formula. So you can see, for six to 18-inch trees, we go from one to two. Replacement trees, from 19 to 29, we go from three to four. And then 30 and above, or our heritage tree classification, we go from six to eight. The other thing that we define here is the actual amounts of the replacement trees. So if you're unable to, or you choose not to replace trees on your lot per your construction plans, you do have the option to essentially donate fee in lieu of to the big tree fund. So if you can't plant the trees on your property, we will find somewhere in the township to plant them to maintain the same level of canopy. And then the highlights for the numbers three and four is just indicating that those numbers have changed based off of the addition of number two there. So the reason why we're doing this, again, is to maintain the canopy, but then also the fee in lieu of amounts. Previously, we really just had a precedent set, and the amounts were not defined in the ordinance itself. This is our way to define it, so it's a lot clearer to everyone who's reviewing the ordinance. And also, having a set amount for residentially zoned trees, 300 per replacement tree, and then commercially zoned, 500 per replacement tree. And the reason why those two are different is because in residentially zoned areas, the effort involved to replace a tree and the cost is lower than commercial. And there's some additional analysis, you know, that's happening in the commercially zoned districts. Just to add to that, and then I'll open it up for any questions before we go to the next update. So the main purpose of all of this was to look for ways to update the ordinance and not add an extreme amount of administrative burden to any of this. So really, what's happening now is that during development projects, we're doing a tree inventory anyways. Technically, in the ordinance, it's really just limited to the limit of disturbance, that the trees are being identified and counted. But most of the engineering firms that we're working with notate all the trees on the property anyways. So to calculate that percentage of trees that are existing and trees coming out, really not that big of a change as it stands, and just some minor wording clarification in the section that you see on screen. So to wrap up, so the rationale for behind doing all of this, introduce minimal addition of burden on the staff, as noted, fee in lieu of introducing the definition, so there's increased visibility. And then the replacement formula is meant to, you know, when you do a wide swath removal of any lot, it's a lot harder to regrow that canopy from a blank slate than if you have an existing canopy. And there's some other USDA Forest Service pieces on this data and this research that you can read on your own time. But with that said, I can pause for any questions on this number one update before we move into the second one.
I have one. Where'd you pick 50%, or why did you, is there precedent for that?
Sure. So the 50% number did come from some of the data and research that we looked at. And also, we understand, we don't want to introduce something that is very burdensome and also very strict. We understand that, you know, we have to have a happy balance between encouraging development, but then also maintaining the beauty of Radnor. So, you know, this is a very, I'll say, fair introduction that won't cause a lot of, I'll say, disturbance of what's already been happening in regards to the projects that come before the township. So that was the meaning behind it.
Commissioner Agnew. Hi. Who does this apply to? Is this for just developers, or is this?
So the tree replacement formula and the tree ordinance is applicable to any project within the township. So it doesn't necessarily have to be because of a new construction project. Someone could just be wanting to change their landscape, or possibly removing trees to create, you know, a yard. We see all sorts of cases of why they come before us to remove trees. And also, you know, the township, to some extent, is also subject to this. But typically, you know, whenever we're talking about township projects, especially with the park removal projects, we are going above and beyond for what we're doing when it comes to replacements.
So it's for people in their houses as well as developers?
Exactly.
And so if someone has a small lot, but they have an old tree on it, and they take it down, they're 100%. They've got one tree, they take it down, that's 100%.
Sure, exactly.
Is there an exception for if the tree is dying, dead?
Yes, yes. So we have what's called a definition of a hazardous tree. So if it's dead, dying, or failing, we have our Township Arboretum come out, the applicant needs to fill out a hazard tree report, and we can classify, you know, that tree. But that's only for, in that one tree scenario, only if the tree is a heritage tree, 30 inches or larger. But if you want to remove five trees a year, that's totally within right, as long as they're under 30 inches, and you don't have to submit anything to the township. So in the case of, you know, the 50%, you know, that would apply to the heritage tree size only in that case.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Riley.
Thank you. Just on, say, on average, a 12-inch tree, 12-inch diameter tree, in the current one, it's just one replacement tree. And that can be between two and two and a half inches in diameter. Is that, that's all we do?
That's all we do. And the reason why the formula is the way it is today is, you know, this formula has gone against best practice from when the ordinance was put into place, you know, back in the 70s through revisions up to this point. And it's all based off of replacement study and maintaining the canopy is really what it comes down to.
I mean, just the size of it compared to, just a 12-inch, which wasn't that big, the two and a half inch is smaller. And area-wise, the cross-sectional areas, like, it's like 23 to 1, it's 1/23rd of what it is. It's this, you know, this thing compared to that thing.
Sure.
And then 30% of them don't make it. So I think that's why you're raising.
That's part of it, yes, yeah. And again, it's being fair with understanding development, encouragement, but then also maintaining our canopy. And this is one way to do that.
Yeah, but, you know, to put in one tree, or one tiny little tree, it's not that hard to put on another one.
Yeah.
You have the equipment.
Well, true. The reason for the two and a half inch caliper tree replacement is, I mean, they are, they're not cheap, I'll say, to put in. So the $300 and $500 replacement tree formula, that is essentially what it costs market rate, you know, to purchase the tree, have it installed. So could we add many more trees to the replacement formula? Of course we could, but the cost does go significantly up. And also, just based off of what the mission is, which is just replacing what was removed, that is why the way it is. Thank you.
Hey Seth, appreciate the presentation. I don't know if you are aware, but I spent two years on the Shade Tree Committee, Commission before I joined the board. And one of the issues, to pick up on Commissioner Agnew's question, one of the issues that I always had was that the formula holds private property owners to the same standards as developers. Is that an issue you guys explored when you were looking to update this formula?
Yeah, we discussed it. And on occasion, you know, it's within our right to provide relief where necessary, because we do know that, you know, there are, in some cases, a financial burden. But I'll say this, you know, if you're adding an addition, or a pool, or changing your landscape at your lot, typically, there's not a financial burden. So this is meant to remind everyone that we have a beautiful township, and we want to, and we need to, maintain our canopy. So everyone is subject, you know, to this same formula. And that's due to, you know, just because a resident versus a commercial lot, or vice versa. In our eyes, the canopy is the canopy.
But I think, you know, if you were to retweak the formula and hold developers to a higher standard, I think at that point, you guarantee the canopy.
Sure. And I'll just add to that, most of the cases where we're going to see a developer involved is going to be that upper tier, so above 50% clearing. So think of the projects of like a new lot. So, you know, you have an empty lot today filled with trees, you want to build a house. So that's where that would mostly apply. Or if, you know, you want to change the zoning from single-family home to an apartment complex. So nine times out of 10, you're going to, a developer's going to fall into that 50% above. And then typically, a residential project adding a pool, or a small addition, or whatever, you're going to fall into that category that exists today. Make sense? Great. Any other questions?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay.
Wonderful. Here for our consideration, do you want any feedback from us, or?
So this is just an introduction tonight, and I'll leave it up to the Solicitor if we need to take a formal vote on this to move forward or not.
No, tonight, well, tonight would be, there's a couple suggested amendments to the code. Tonight is to authorize an ordinance to actually be drafted, which would come back for introduction, which would incorporate what's being recommended. So that's the only vote, just authorization to draft that ordinance. It'll come back for introduction, and then we'll go through the normal ordinance adoption process.
So just a head nod tonight? Just a head nod tonight, more or less?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. So for update number one, do we have a head nod to move forward, to pass this on to the Solicitor? All right, great. Number two, this one is faster, easier. So we're updating the guidance on ash trees. As we know, the ash borer bug stormed our ash, beautiful ash trees within the past 10 years. And what we had done in order to improve the safety and be able to have the township and everyone locally be able to expeditiously remove ash trees, we introduced an ordinance amendment to say, hey, these four species of ash trees, you do not need to submit a hazard tree report, you can just take care of them. You know, we know that that introduces a burden to the township, because every hazard tree report requires administrative tasks, but then also, it requires the Township Arboretum to go out and verify. So obviously, you know, this was a cost savings thing, but also a safety thing and an efficiency thing. Now that we're over the hump of removing ash trees, more or less, I know there's still a lot in the township, but more or less, our recommendation is to remove this. And there's two reasons why. Really, one is, we started to see a trend in which some tree companies, they won't be named, would just classify trees as being ash trees to get around the replacement formula and not having to submit a hazard tree report, and a few other things. And then also, the second one is really how we define what this is within the ordinance. So that item number two, meaning that all ash trees that are defined hazardous or healthy, no matter what species of ash it is, needs to be reported, and then also verified by the township. So with this, as well as with the prior update, obviously, it'll be introduced formally, potentially next BOC, but there's going to need to be some communication around this, just because this has been, you know, such a standard for a while. But the goal with both of these updates is that, you know, we can communicate these updates together as really a bundled revision, if you will. So that's it. It's pretty simple, just removing this language here, but happy to open it up for any questions that you guys might have.
Thanks. Questions?
I would probably push back on removing the ash. It's not my perception that we're over the ash borer blight. I have to treat my ash tree every year, and certainly, they're happy to take my money. We treat the ash tree at more or less the same time every year, and this year, we did it a little bit later than we normally do. And there was just a shower of emerald ash boers that fell all over my patio as a result. Totally understand the concern that there are people who are abusing the exception, but the remedy for that is to charge them for having abused that exception. And I'll just be blunt, the ash tree that I have is probably, you measure those in baseball bats, I think. It's like 50 million baseball bats in volume, and it overhangs my house. I'm very concerned about the upcoming storm season that we have, because it's going to be, everybody's saying, an absolute monster.
Sure.
I'm not going to wait for the township. If I'm told that I have to take it down, I just, I won't do it.
Sure. So in an emergency situation, you know, any property owner can remove the tree, and the Arboretum gets called out to, you know, verify at that point. So just to be clear, this isn't saying that, we're saying all ash trees are held to a higher standard now. It's just a reporting component. So just like with any other hazard tree, no matter what species it is, we're just saying now, hey, every tree, if it goes beyond 30 inches, or if it goes beyond the six that you can remove per year, you know, you have to go through the proper reporting and channels to include the ash trees.
I understand the ask. A lot of the ash trees that are left are the larger ones, because the ones that were best able to sustain the blight were the larger ones to begin with. So I know there's a bunch of just monster ash trees that look like giant woody octopuses in my neck of the township. And like I said, I recognize the concerns. I will not wait for the Township Arboretum to come if I'm told that I have to take it down, and there's a storm coming. And, you know, chase me fundamentally. I shouldn't normally be saying that, but I will. It's an issue, I'm not going to let the tree fall on my kids while they're in the house.
Sure, understood.
Sorry, couldn't you just take it down, and then the Arboretum comes and says, that's an ash tree?
So we've seen-
Can I jump?
Yes, absolutely, Ricky.
Yeah, how it works, we're not going to stop you from taking the tree down. When someone says that they're going to take a tree down, all they do would let us know exactly what it is. The Township Arboretum would verify it. He could see that from pictures. They're also supposed to include pictures when they send in a hazard tree report. So he can verify exactly what it is. We get it, he gets it, he gives it right back, we call it a resident. So it's, we're not going to slow up anything.
Understood. But if Asplund comes out and says, take the tree down, they're going to start moving the chainsaws right then. There's not going to be like photographs and waiting for John to, like, I'm really not kidding this year. I'm freaked out. They hang, the tree is enormous, it hangs over my kids' bedrooms. If Asplund tells me to take the tree down, like, I'm going to take out my little ego chainsaw and help them right then and there.
Well, you can send it to us tomorrow, so we already have you queued up.
Awesome, fair enough. It looks, like, it looks to me like it's in great condition. It's just, it's the storms that I'm so worried about.
I mean, most of the ash trees, and this is the part that we're not changing. We're not stopping the ash trees from being taken down. The Arboretum has not at one time said, when an ash tree comes across my desk, his desk, we're leaving that tree alone. The standing order from him is, if it's ash, we're removing it. So it's not going to be a back and forth. It's never been a back and forth when it pertains to ash trees. If someone like yourself says, I want to save it, and it's on their property, then we will extend that courtesy. But for us, we just, we remove them, because there hasn't been any saving, especially on township property. Private property may be a little different, because you can assume that risk, but for township property, they're just removed once that comes across the desk.
If that's the default, then why not just leave it the way it is? And you get in trouble if you take down like an oak tree and pretend that it was an ash.
So I'll chime in with this. To do forensic on species may sound like it's an easy thing to do, but it's actually kind of tough when the stump is cut flush, and, you know, the rest of the tree is gone. And in most cases, the stumps are ground as well. So it takes a lot more of John Hosback's time to do the forensic work than it is if we were to just, you know, remove this requirement. And the other important thing to note is too, there, I mean, we could probably quantify this to some extent, but, you know, there's plenty of cases that have been where someone's removed, let's say, more than six trees. And well, you know, the township does get a call, and the Arboretum goes out, the stumps are ground, and, you know, they said, well, they were all ash trees. But, you know, when you look at Google Maps or whatever, they clearly were not ash trees.
Can't we just make it that if it's an exigent circumstance, they have to, whoever's taking the tree down has to video. They're taking it down, you see what it is. If they haven't done it, then the fine comes in. On an emergency circumstance.
Yeah, I mean, that sounds like it would be a great solve, but you'd be surprised. The reporting aspect of this is a challenge, you know, for the township and these tree companies, you know, they're going from job to job to job. The last thing on their minds is paperwork and pictures, you know.
Well, let's make it first thing on their minds, if that's a requirement.
Yeah. As part of the hazard tree report, pictures are required. So, you know, that would just enforce the pictures in the hazard tree report if we remove this. So that is essentially what this update is doing.
I've taken enough time talking about my tree.
Do we have a sense of how many loopholes have been taken advan, I mean, like, how many trees are we talking about that our people are just massive, taking trees down without?
So one of the-
How do we know?
Sure. One of the reasons why this is in front of you tonight is because it got to the threshold that, you know, we felt, the township, the Arboretum, and, you know, myself, speaking from the Shade Tree Commission, where, I don't know that we could put an exact number on it, because there's cases where we might have never knew that it was happening. But it got to the point where, you know, it was being abused. So that's why we're proposing it.
No, totally. I get the rationale. I guess what I'm trying to get a sense of is like, what does abuse look like? Is it like 10% of the cases? Is it 40% of the cases? And how do we know what the volume of trees that we're talking about, like, how many people are actually taking advantage of the loophole? And is it the same people doing it over and over again versus a mass problem, which sounds more like a, an issue dealing with a couple of different companies versus all the companies? I'm just thinking about what Jack's saying, and trying to figure out if it's like, something that needs to be addressed through ordinance, or if it's more like controls, if that makes sense.
Yeah. I'll let Ricky chime in if you have any quantifiable metrics.
I don't have a number to give you as far as quantity, but what I can say is the couple instances that me and John have been involved in, and without mentioning any addresses or anything like that, we've had a couple houses where every tree on our property was cut down. And let's say it was 60 trees. Everyone was gone. We called the contractor, they still had a lawn sign in the front. And we called them, and that was the first thing he said, they were all ash. And you could clearly see, when we went on Google, they weren't all ash. It may have been a percentage. There was another property at another location, other side of town, same thing. I showed up, got a phone call from a resident, showed up, and it was two properties, and same contractor, you know. So when it is a contractor that me and the Township Arboretum have been aware of, of course, the work is then shut down. But we can't stop them from working out of the points. But that job is shut down, and they can't resume until everything has been satisfied. So those jobs are still standing, and they haven't been started back up yet. So that's the only power that we have, but we have noticed that people have been, you know, some contractors have been doing that, have been stating that, you know, that answer. So we're just trying to get a stopgap. It's not going to solve everything. But if we can get the people who try to abuse it, then that's a win. And most of the other good contractors, they know, and they, you know, respect the rules. But it's just those couple who seem to have those issues with.
Thank you for that. Yeah, it sounds like you're feeling like this is a leading indicator of a problem that could compound over time, and you're trying to get ahead of it.
Right, exactly. Because we might be able to correct a couple of contractors today, but, you know, they cycle in and out all the time. So we just want to make sure that the language in the ordinance is matching what we need to have happen.
So I'm not looking at the ordinance, just your section here.
Mm-hmm.
Maybe you can answer it, or perhaps you, Mr. Foster. What is the fine for violating, for taking down trees and claiming they're ash? So is, do we have anything in the ordinance that says, when you do that, it's X amount per tree? And how do we enforce that?
So far, there's nothing-
So far, there's nothing that's in the ordinance. What we'll do, we might consult with Director Narsini and also the township solicitor to try to come up with an amount. We don't really have something set because it hasn't really got to be this bad until just recently. So, it's something that we'll have to try to come up with.
So, I'm going to suggest that that's a solution. Let's, let's change the ordinance and make it really expensive for coming in and clearcutting in our community. And that will keep those bad contractors out of our community because we will fine them to a point that it hurts. So, I'm going to...
I don't disagree.
I'm looking at Mr. White now.
Yeah, just, just real quick on the fines. There is a section in that, that, that chapter that talks about fines, but it's the, it, the application is difficult because it's the same situation we run into in enforcement in other areas of the code where it becomes a civil enforcement that has to go through the courts. And most of the time, those get thrown out. So, it's difficult to really have a heavy hammer in that regard the way it's written now. So, maybe there's a different way that could be drafted where it's, it's not a, something that has to go through the court system for the township to get any kind of funds on.
Yeah, the, the ordinance has a, it's $250 per tree unlawfully removed or, per day, or $350 per tree unlawfully removed. But in order to collect that, you have to file a district justice court complaint. It's an ordinance violation. So, it's a non-traffic ordinance violation, which means, and we've not, I don't recall ever doing one with the shade tree ordinance. We've done it with other ordinances, but we're in front of district justice court and it's up to the DJ to decide what the fine is.
If we, if we were to consider our option, I mean, there's other ways to get to their wallet other than asking for the money directly, right? Are there permit restrictions we could put in place, restrict their, their ability to do business in Radnor Township should they violate this ordinance versus asking for the fine directly?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's other options. We can put a fine system in here that says, "Here's the fine," or we're going to district justice court and go after this bigger fine and attorney's fees and costs. I mean, you can do that. You can impact their ability, because I think everyone that does tree removal has to be licensed, correct?
Yeah, licensed and registered.
We can pull licenses if we have a repeat offender. I mean, we'd have to write it into the shade tree ordinance so it's clear. I mean, I think we do that with other types of people that work in the township that have to be licensed. We, like rental housing licenses, we can revoke, but it's written into the code. So, I mean, that's, if we want to go down that path, we can, we can do that. I mean, I can put together some options and circulate that.
That's something to consider. That way, you know, financial fines are, I think, to what you're, what I'm hearing are harder to enforce, but their fear of not being able to do business in the area is probably much greater than a $300 a tree or something like that. I mean, you're impacting future earnings for a significant period of time, so something to think about.
Sure. And, and both of these updates were meant to be stepping stones, but also making sure that we do not impact the administrative burden on having to become the tree police, right? And Ricky and his crew are busy every day, all day. Our township arborist, John Hosbeck, he's, he's very busy. Obviously, you know, we need to pay him every time we consult. So, just keeping that in mind at the same time.
Could you turn to the next slide, what you replaced it with? So, my concern, I guess, really is that if the new requirement would require all ash trees that are defined as hazardous, how much of, of the arborist's time is going to be put out there? I mean, we're actually going to be paying him to follow up on all these hazardous tree reports.
I think it's a cost in which we would have been paying for anyways because we know that a lot of these projects and tree clearings are not ash. So, you know, it's something that we would have been paying for anyways.
But this is specific to ash trees.
Well, meaning, if someone...
Well, I guess it's not really because any tree that's defined as hazardous, yeah.
Sure. So, if, they might be saying they're ash trees, but if they're actually oak and walnuts, you know, we should be reviewing them anyways. So, I don't necessarily expect this to be a, a wave of new hazard tree applications, but it's just, again, a stepping stone. It's meant to not introduce a bunch of burden and, you know, keeping efficiency in mind with this update.
If an ash tree is dead, dead, is that hazardous? I mean, obviously hazardous, but do you, like, if it, do you have to treat a dead tree as a hazardous tree, is what I'm asking?
So, there is language in the ordinance that classifies an emergency tree removal. So, let's say half the tree just fell on your driveway, or it's swaying in the wind and you can see the, the ground upheaving. You can have that removed immediately and retroactively submit the proper paperwork and everything's good. And that would strictly just apply to heritage trees if it's one tree, so 30 inches and above. But if it's 30 inches and below, you don't have to let us know. It's fine. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not going to add any safety issues. You know, there's, there's hundreds of species of trees and this just happens to be one species that we had an exception in place because of the widespread ash borer bug. And now that that wave is kind of over, yes, there are a bunch of ash trees still out there, but not as significant as it once was. So, it's, it's really just leveling the playing field.
Seth, if I could say one other point. To the Board of Commissioners, this, what he's recommending, this is the same thing that we follow with all the trees in the township, with township property. Like, even though the arborist says if they're ash trees, you can remove them, we still send him pictures of what we're talking about. We still show it to him so that there's no, no one can say, "Well, we don't know what kind of tree that is." So, even for us as a township, we want to make sure that the arborist has vetted what we're taking down is what we say we're taking down. So, it's the same standard that we would ask these, the businesses and the residents to follow. And it, this, trust me, this would not slow down the process of how fast he can respond at all.
Okay. Do you need a nod or a nay?
I had not.
I mean, it sounds like there's a bit more discussion on this one than the last one.
Sure. I think we can have the solicitor draw up some options for some fine options and explore this a little bit more, but we'll move forward with exploring.
Perfect.
Sound good?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you for your presentation. All right. Next, we'll have public participation. If there's anything anyone in the audience would like to speak to, just give us your name and street.
Good evening, Marlon Easton, 230 Windermere Avenue. I'm also here representing the Radnor Conservancy. Okay. I have some comments, but I thought I was just going to be here to say, first of all, the Radnor Conservancy 100% wholeheartedly endorses both of these proposed amendments. First of all, amongst our members, we do get, there is a increasing level of concern within the community relative to the loss of our canopy. And for those of us who have been very involved in trees, we sometimes truly lose sight of the forest because we're focusing on the trees. So, for instance, when we talk about canopy, that means mature trees. That means the ones that help with storm water management. That's the ones that give shade. That's the ones that provide habitat. So, relative, so we do have a lot of our Conservancy members who are expressing concerns about that. I think that was also reflective in the, the long-term plan relative to our citizens and their interest in environment. I would say that what the Shade Tree Commission, the Public Works, and our solicitor have done have taken actually a very conservative approach here. Our shade tree ordinance is wonderful, but it is actually past due in having amendments. This is a very small first step to a deal with some of the most egregious, I'm going to call them loopholes. So, relative to the ash trees, for instance, this was a special condition that was added to the ordinance because of what was happening. So, we're not act, I would say to the commissioners that this isn't a new amendment. It's just returning it to its original form to remove the abuse. For the most part, you know, this isn't citizens, individual homeowners on that. So, it's to deal with an abuse that is harming to our community. On also the, when it comes to some of the conversations, for instance, that Commissioner Larkin had about his particular ash tree, once again, sometimes for those of us who have, who sort of almost have the ordinance memorized, we sort of forget that maybe people aren't familiar that any homeowner can take down five trees a year. No, no going before the arborist or the Shade Tree Commission on that. Also, if it is a hazardous emergency in risk of falling, you're having an arborist come out. They're going to talk to you about that. There, there, almost any reputable arborist, when he gives you a quote, is going to include pictures. So, they've already got all the material. And all of that can be submitted after the fact. So, in no way does this, is this going to preclude citizens who have fears about their trees. Also, I'll just dovetail on what Seth Reiser said, that there are additional things. The Conservancy, along with the township and the Shade Tree, have already started some dialogues about how in the next phase for updating amendments, there needs to be additional language clarifying some of the definitions around health of trees so it is a more specific. So, net result here again, Radnor Conservancy fully endorses all of this and would say that they have taken a really measured and conservative approach here to close the loopholes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further public participation.
Sarah Pilling, 29 Garrett Avenue. It is hot. I have a pretty expensive and detailed hanging in my house that measures things. And at 10 o'clock this morning, it was 98 degrees and the remote is not in the sun and because of the humidity, the index was 124 degrees. There was an article in today's New York Times by international people, which I would like to quote from. June was the earth's 13th consecutive month to break a global heat record. It beat the record set last year for the hottest June on record, according to data from the Copernicus Climate Change Service of the EU. That's the equivalent to our NOAA. We should consider this the new normal. We need to prepare, be preparing for more heat. More often, that's a reality. Heat waves are part of a natural weather pattern of high-pressure systems, which causes unusually high temperatures to stagnate for a minimum of three days to more than a month. But heat waves are growing stronger and more frequent under climate change driven by the burning of fossil fuels. June was also the 12th consecutive month of global warming at or above 1.5 degrees Celsius, which you may remember was the goal, to not go above that, from the Paris Agreement. Heat waves kill more people and send more people to the hospital than any other extreme weather event. They can get less attention because they don't destroy an area like a hurricane, a flood, or a tornado does, but they're a bigger threat to people's health.
Thank you. While we're on this topic, could I take a minute, Chief, to ask you? I don't want to blindside you here, but just to mention the cooling station?
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you.
At the direction of the township manager, after hearing input from the commissioners, we advertise on all of our social media and township platforms about a cooling station that is opened. We actually utilize this room and a couple of other ones. We have charging stations, cooling, and water for constituents should they need to. Secondarily, we also teamed up with the Wayne Senior Center where the Radnor Police, as long as you live within the borders of Radnor Township, will deliver a fan should they need to be handed out. And then obviously, you could pick one up, of course, directly at the senior center.
Thank you very much. Any further public participation? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item that any commissioner would like to remove from the consent agenda? Seeing none, any public comment on items on the consent agenda? All right. Could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And a second? Commissioner Agnew, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Now, I am going to rearrange things a little bit because Commissioner Abels got to step out, and I apologize, just to confuse you, we're going to put the last two items first and they shouldn't take too long, I would hope. So, let's start with item E. Resolution 2024-88, authorizing ASH associates to perform professional land boundary surveying services at Odericio Park.
In the amount?
$23,500, covered by the Delco Greenways Grant Program. Could I have a motion, please? And a second? Thank you. Who wants to start us off on this? Commissioner, or Commissioner Cohen.
I just graduated you. Director Cohen. How about that? I'm flattered.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tammy Cohen, Director of Parks and Recreation. Just want to note that both E and F do, do go together. So, they're two resolutions, actually, that have been the byproduct of two years of great discussions that have been led by the Parks and Recreation Board where we've been discussing the improvements at Odericio Park that we know have been desired by the community that really have been in the capital budget, in the park's capital budget for decades with various pieces. So, that includes items like the Comfort Station, which is over 50 years old. There's the playground, which is over 26 years old. We have access points in and out of the park at two different areas that need improvements, parking areas that require some improvements and reorganization and rethinking. We have a significant amount of hillside stabilization that's needed around the baseball field where we have a mass amount of erosion that's happening. We also know that there's a great deal of tree plantings. We want to continue within a lot of the park projects that we're doing comprehensively. So, how this ties to this particular resolution really is that the land boundary survey essentially becomes the data and the information that our conceptual plan, which is in the next resolution, contemplates and utilizes in order to be prepared. So, I mentioned there were a lot of land detail that goes into the, the engineering of that plan. And so, understanding those angles, those elevations, and that detail is going to be essential for the comprehensive planning process. Typically, these fall within one resolution. A lot of times, what will happen is we'll have a consultant that comes in that does a master plan for a park and usually includes this within their work that they're doing. We actually pulled these apart. What we've learned over the years in doing that, it gives us a little bit more negotiation ability. We can go out and have several surveyors, in this case, like, like I did, you know, to give us a quote and kind of work backwards from there to try to save some money. So, we're trying to get savvy through some of these projects. So, essentially, there's, there's some other pieces that go along with, with the land boundary survey that we need to understand. First of all, there's actually two parcels that comprise Odericio Park. One is identified right now by the county as being owned by the township, which is approximately 15 acres. And then another portion is owned by the school district, which is 10 acres. So, we have a little bit of a piece there we need to work out. So, getting the land boundary survey and ASH involved is going to help us understand that. Because right now, in our conversations with the school district, they think the township owns the parcels in totality, all 25 acres. So, that's a piece we really need to understand. We also, to the northern part of the parcel, the northeastern part of the parcel where it comes in at church in Fairview, we have a tricky area there where we have a road that actually comes in and goes through the park. There's a long strip of land that, that is there that borders what we believe is the park. There's also a backup part of a parcel at Second Baptist Church and at the RTCA. We don't understand where the property boundaries start and... don't understand where the property boundaries start and stop. So because a lot of those areas might be integral to the redesign of the park, we want to understand those. And they also could be beneficial, of course, you know, knowing both of those properties are, you know, a big part of the community there off of Highland Avenue. To the southern part of the parcel, we have large wooded area that abuts, it backs up to residents along Atlee, Atlee Road. And those residents have discussed stormwater management issues that they have, that they believe is a result of some of the things that are going on in the park. So there, we also don't understand the boundaries of the park very well. So this is going to give us that opportunity. The park is 62 years old. It's never had a survey. So this detail is not only going to generate all of that, but it's also going to put it all together in what's called a CAD design, which is a computer, you know, automated type design file that helps the engineers understand all of the layers. That way, when they put the plan together, they can understand all of the things like the location of the utilities, as I had mentioned, some of the slopes in the areas that exist on the property to help them basically put the plan together. And we know there's going to be replacement amenities and things like that, that might not go back in the same locations of where they are. That's going to help throughout the process to put that together. So a lot of that is very important. So for that reason, that's why we're requesting to have approval of Resolution 2024-88, authorizing ASH to do that work. And then, of course, subsequently, Greenhouse Design Group, I know we'll get to that one in a minute, to be able to do their work in actually putting the plan together. So if I could just mention a couple of other things, too, that this cost is going to be covered in full by a Delco Greenways grant that we were able to obtain for the park, not only for the survey and the boundary, but also for the design concept development. The Parks and Recreation Board actually started discussing this in 2022 in February. We've had about 25 meetings, believe it or not, throughout that time. We had four that were at the RTCA, which is located on Highland Avenue. We engaged multiple members of the community to come out. We engaged folks through community events that we have and we hold at the park with the Odericio Music and Movie Night, and the Unity in Our Community event that'll be coming up. So it's really been a very comprehensive process. And what we learned from Fenimore is that taking the time to meet with the residents and go through all the steps and the stages really is beneficial. And it also saves us that time in consultant's fees. We also learned from Clemente Chrome Project that we did years ago. We spent a lot of time engaging residents, holding charrettes, having public discussions. And those are all things that we can do ourselves. And that's what we've done through this process to save money. So I know we're trying to get creative as we move through park design and make some of these improvements. So I do believe both of these lend significantly to that process. And we'll continue to think creatively as that, as time goes on.
Thank you for that excellent summary. Any Commissioner comments or questions? Any public participation on this? Seeing none, I am going to call a vote on item E, Resolution 2024-88. Could I have your vote to approve?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right. We'll move into item F, Resolution 2024-87, authorizing Greenhouse Design Group to perform conceptual design and professional planning services as part of the Odericio Park Improvements Project, at a cost not to exceed $34,260, also covered by the Delco Greenways Grant Program. Could I have a motion, please?
So wait a second.
Okay. Okay. Well, can it go with Commissioner Larkin moved it, and Commissioner Mulrooney seconded it. All right. Director Cohen, do you have anything to add?
Well, first of all, I just want to thank the Parks and Recreation Board. They really have had amazing support, and they have a huge commitment to the future improvements that we know are on the near horizon for Odericio Park. So I want to thank them for all their efforts in the last two years. You know, again, I mentioned there's a lot of meetings we've had. We've been at the park. We've kind of moved around all over the place and had a lot of good discussions. So I want to thank them for their time. And I also want to note that this, it's still starting the process. So this is going to, this is going to tie in all the feedback that we received. We also did a survey that started in January of 2023, where we gathered information. We actually had about 200 responses on a survey that the community helped circulate through the neighborhoods for us. So we're going to tie in that information, generate a concept plan, and then that concept plan, weaving in all of those pieces, is going to be the starting point for, again, continued discussions that are going to occur. And that will continue to be vetted out through the Parks and Recreation Board. We hope to have an order of magnitude on what we think the cost is going to be, hopefully by October, November, so that that's something that we can tie into the upcoming budget preparation for 2025. So we've got a lot of great things on the horizon, but a lot of really solid work has been done already.
Thank you. Any Commissioner questions or comments? No? Any public participation? All right. I'm going to call for a vote on item F, Resolution 2024-87. All in favor? Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you for going out of order.
Under the wire.
Okay. We're going to go back to item A, appointments to board and commissions. We have Jenna Fulton as a Parks and Recreation Board appointee for a term of July 12, 2024, to December 31, 2028. Could I get a motion, please?
Same.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Any Commissioner comment or question about this? Any public comment about Ms. Fulton? Nope. Seeing none, I'm going to call a vote. All in favor of this appointment? Aye. It's unanimous. All right. Item B is a caucus, a preliminary final minor land development for 26 Wentworth Lane, a two-lot subdivision and building. I don't see anybody here from that. Oh, you're here. I'm sorry. I didn't realize you were here. I thought, was thinking you were here for the next one. So come on up.
Shock Engineering is here. Sir, Commissioners, I'm going to, just a quick intro.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Norcini.
I'm going to ask the engineer representative for the applicant to step through the waiver request, please. Talk about the building setback. You have a letter on that. And they, one of the requests they have as a waiver is preliminary final, but we are caucus either way. But I'll turn it over to the shock group.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Tim Davis from Shock Group. This evening, we are requesting five waivers, as Steve Norcini referred to. The first waiver is the existing principal buildings and driveways adjacent to the peripheral strip within 500 feet. So we are requesting a waiver from having to detail every parcel and drive it within 500 feet.
Mr. Davis, I'm sorry. I apologize for it. Could you just open the plans and let the board see the general layout of the twin? Thank you.
So that is the first waiver. The second waiver is to maintain the existing right-of-way of 33 feet instead of the required 60 feet for local streets. The, on that number two, Wentworth Lane has a existing right-of-way of 33 feet that we are maintaining. Number three, to maintain the existing cartway of 22.25 feet instead of the requirement of 28 feet for local cartways. That does vary. We are actually going up to 24 and a half, depending as the road widens. So we are maintaining the wider part of Wentworth Lane, and conforming to that standard that exists, however, not requesting a waiver from the 28 feet that is in the ordinance. Number four is to not provide sidewalks along the frontage. There are sidewalks on the other side of the street. There are no adjacent sidewalks on that side of Wentworth Lane. And number five, to provide street trees at an interval greater than 30 feet. We do meet the required number of street trees, however, they are spaced at 35 feet instead of 30. That is due to utility and driveway locations on the frontage. The other comments, so those are on the Fleming letter, the other comments are, a will comply, acknowledge and will comply. With the clarification on that street tree, there was a question on that in there, and we are requesting it for the, still conforming to the required number of street trees, just they are spaced 35 feet instead of 30 feet apart as required. For the Gilmore Associates letter, for the four comments, we acknowledge the saldo comments. And the E1 comment, we will comply with the request to put in all concrete curbing and remove the option for granite curbing. So it will comply.
Could you please review your letter regarding the building setback narrative?
Yes. So the building setback requirement has the building setbacks set from the property line, or sorry, from the right-of-way. So in this case, at the last Plan Commission hearing, we had a request to look at the predominant setback of the street right-of-way as it goes down the street. And so the, we went out and measured all of the setbacks as they went down the street to determine a predominant setback as it went down there. And based on that, along our side of the street, we found that we were within two feet of the predominant setback as it exists on that street. And for the entire street, on both sides of it, we are actually greater than the predominant setback, providing more separation between it. We do conform with the requirement for front yard setback by, I believe, an additional six feet over the requirement.
Thank you. Mr. Norcini, any comments?
No, ma'am. So in essence, the plan is pretty clean. If the, my request would be that the applicant, where he's noted, will comply, has everything cleaned up before they come back to this board. And actually, and I do have one request, sir. If you could flip to the existing conditions, like the picture, the GIS picture, to show the board the setbacks you're talking about, and where that proposed house sits within them, just to give them an aerial view?
So the proposed lot is here. Wentworth Lane does meander, we'll say. It does have a zigzag in it. The houses across the street are much closer. They actually are closer than is allowable in the township. Under the current zoning, the required front yard setback, we have exceeded the requirement by six feet. There was a request to do a predominant setback. The houses do get closer to the street as it goes down. A few of the porches, was that about six houses down, are the same distance as the proposed houses on the lots.
On this, I'm, so I'm trying to understand what you're saying. You're saying that the ones on your side of the street, which would be, I guess, to your right as you're looking at the street, this will or will not be in line with those? Because they all look about the same to me.
Yes. Yeah. So the houses, so if we're looking facing that side of Wentworth Avenue, the houses to the left of the property, further down Wentworth, the next couple houses do sit farther back, due to there was a previous private street that paralleled Wentworth Lane. That street is now used for front yard parking. So the houses sit farther back than the current setback allows. As we go down farther down Wentworth Lane, those houses have additions that were likely front porches that were enclosed. And so because of those front porches, they end up lining up with the proposed residence. However, those do sit by eye about four or five houses down from the current house.
I see what you mean now. Thank you. That's very helpful.
Could you, could you please?
Can I ask Ian in the back to maybe zoom in a little closer to the proposed property on this?
And could you point, please point to the board where the front of the proposed houses?
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, it's hard to see where the house starts.
The house starts right where my finger is. Is the pointer still here?
Yeah. So it's a good car length or more closer to the street than its next-door neighbor.
Correct. The next two houses do sit farther back.
Yeah, which is nice.
Sorry, just looking at it. It says the line of the second floor extension over the driveway. So is the driveway, is there like an overhang that's heading?
Correct.
Towards the street?
Correct. So the first floor of the house does sit in line with those houses. I would say about two feet closer. However, the overhang does come forward to be more in line with the houses down, down the street further that have these front porches that were enclosed.
Yeah. What's keeping you from moving it further back, given the size of the lot?
There is a sanitary easement directly behind one of the houses that we are right up against. We are a foot off the existing sanitary easement. The other option when we went to Shade Tree is to make the same footprint, the same square footage of the house. We'd have to make the houses wider. We were trying to maintain a tree line along it, and we would be encroaching, pushing the stormwater pipes into the drip line of those trees.
And then, help me understand the sidewalk exemption?
We are requesting exemption. There are sidewalks across the street, and there are no sidewalks on this side, the property side of Wentworth Lane, the entire length.
Yeah. I mean, with, well, it's because there wasn't, and this being a new property, and with the expansion of the business district up on that corner, the sidewalks would be helpful because there is still street parking on Wentworth, right? So I would say maybe think about if we're not going to put them in front of the property, putting aside some sort of other sidewalk funds that we could put somewhere else in this area to try to keep the foot traffic up. Or think about another area. Maybe you could think about putting sidewalks in to support some of the foot traffic. We're trying to get more people walking in the area, right, rather than driving. So if we did think about a waiver there, I'd ask for you guys to think about a way that we could support foot traffic in the area.
And this is for preliminary, so we can definitely take that back.
Just something to think about.
Go to a final and have that discussion during the final plans.
And sort of on this lot, as you have it set there, what's behind the houses? There's like a dotted line with a square and a rectangle?
So if we can, yes, thank you. So there is a sanitary easement. So the, there's a sanitary sewer line that runs in the back. As you can see, we are right up against that in the rear. We have that set so that any allowable overhangs will not actually be in the sanitary setback, as well as there is stormwater management in the back. So I'm guessing those lines were either the stormwater management systems, just at that distance, probably looked darker, or it was the sanitary sewer easement.
So are the, the stormwater management is existing, or this is?
Proposed.
It would be under like a backyard lawn?
Correct. Yep. These are full infiltration systems. As we discussed with the Plan Commission, these systems are designed to handle the 100-year storm with additional capacity. These systems only fill up about 70 to 75% of their capacity. While we are not claiming they handle the 500-year storm internally, we are very close to being able to handle the 500-year storm with no discharge from the systems.
I'm sorry. I think the board just asked us, and I was carrying a client, like an idiot, who responded to this. Is the stormwater system that you're proposing going inside the sanitary sewer easement?
Part of it is, yes.
Is that a problem for us?
I-
This is probably more for us to answer than for you.
We'd like to keep our 10-foot either side of center line of pipe. We're going to, we'll talk to the consultant about that, right? I mean, that's the last thing. We want is a system that collects stormwater next to one of our pipes. We do have worry about INI. I just, if I may add, he very eloquently stated the reasons why the house couldn't be moved. I mean, we'd have to make it wider, have to make, shift it. There is another option concerning the setback up front. I mean- I and I. I just, if I may add, he very eloquently stated the reasons why the house couldn't be moved. I mean, we'd have to make it wider, have to make, shift it. There is another option concerning the setback up front. I mean, the house could just be reduced in size, right? I just wanted to make sure. I'm not saying that's what has to be done, but that's an option that was not broached.
Yeah, I'm having a little difficulty sort of understanding the overhang and the need for it, which would visually pull that house back if you just have driveways and you don't have some second floor overhang. So this looks big, and I appreciate that there are other houses down the street that are closer, you know, over time and different ordinances and waivers come and go. But the one you're right next to, I believe, is going to be completely dwarfed by what you're proposing here. So I'd love to see, you know, some conceptual drawings to be able to, you know, visualize what the house looks like for a person walking on the street.
Yeah, I was going to ask, do we have elevations as well, or just the layout?
For preliminary, just the layout. That'll be explored during final.
And then these are, so what's the, what's the height of this currently? Is it three-story?
I believe so, yes.
Okay. So the overhang's on the second, then you have another floor.
Correct.
And these are streetlights?
Correct. They are not required, however, they were requested and the applicant chose to comply.
Yeah, these are streetlights, and I'm assuming they're, they're the same ones we use in the township, or are these just for the, for this property? Are these small, or are they like large streetlights?
They were taken from the Wayne Historic District Streetlight Standards. That was a request by the review consultants, and the applicant chose to comply.
Tell me a little bit, I got a little confused with the 30-foot or 35-foot tree thing. Are there trees there now?
Yes.
And how far apart are they? Did you say they were 30?
Sorry, along, along the street?
Yeah.
There are no trees there now.
Ah, okay. Never mind. Then that answers my question without a question. Thank you.
The impediment to putting the trees 30 feet as required by the ordinance, are those the streetlights that you're also putting in?
In the stormwater management. We are proposing inlets where the, we would need those trees to be, for them to be 30 feet apart. So they, they get spaced out because of the proposed utilities as well as the streetlights.
Right, but not existing utilities? These are utilities-
Correct.
-you're bringing in, so you can put them anywhere that works?
No. Because of the stormwater management-
These are existing lights that are there?
Sorry, the, the lights, yes, we could put anywhere. However, for aesthetic reasons, we wouldn't want them in the driveway or right next to the driveway. So to move them any closer to the driveway, we put them as close as we could. And then the inlets are dictated by the drainage patterns on the site. We could not move the leftmost inlet or the lowest inlet due to drainage requirements of collecting the site. Excuse me. So the, the tree placement was dictated by where we collect the water, as well as the desire to have the streetlights. To move them either direction would take the space where the tree is. Otherwise, we'd have a tree right next to a driveway, which also has its own considerations, especially the longevity of the tree up against asphalt.
Our Saldau asks you to share driveways where possible. One of the things that you could do would be to combine the two driveways into a single one, flip the garages so they were at the center, and then you would have trees on either side of a single driveway, which also has the benefit frankly of putting a tree right on the property line is, I mean, the tree that you put in is not going to be dropping limbs in the next five years because it's going to be a relatively small one. But 50 years from now, somebody's going to get into a fight with their neighbor because no one can decide who owns the tree, and somebody wants it to be trimmed or removed.
Yes, we actually did have an earlier concept that we brought to the planning commission last July, and they requested that we separate the driveways further. So we, we did flip the houses. The garages were next to each other. We flipped them at the request of the planning commission.
Is there a reason that they gave you for that? They're subject matter experts. They probably have a better thought on this than I do. But what was the reason?
I do not recall their exact reasoning. It was desirability and the decrease of neighbor conflicts.
I'm not quite sure that this is a lot without trees at the street. We're pulling up the map here. I know it from being in that neighborhood.
Could you please flip to the tree removal plan existing? Thank you.
So the existing trees that are being removed are on the building setback. They were not close enough to the street that we would, they would be considered street trees.
Wouldn't that be fixed by moving the setback farther back? You could keep the trees if the setback was within?
No.
No?
Anecdotally, they also were not specimen trees. Anecdotally, they were not specimen trees in Gray House.
All right. Well, they're thinking about trees over here. Mr. Norcini, I have a quick question. Other developments that we have, have been put in front of us, we require a sidewalk. Tell me where we got lost in this one.
So many do, it is a requirement, many developers request a waiver. If you remember, Farriston Road, we just, we, the board, excuse me, did actually request that the sidewalks be removed, right? Yeah, so that was a grant, waiver granted. The-
I, I apologize I'm interrupting you. I just, I want to say on Farriston, I swore up and down that that would not be precedential. There are far fewer streets, and all of the neighbors who were non-developers came in to ask for that in that particular case. Nobody's here asking for that from the neighborhood. So I want to take Farriston out.
And I'm sorry, I, and I, it's not-
You're right, it happened.
It doesn't set a precedent, but that's the most recent one, so it came to mind. But if you walk down the street, which I call Summit Terrace, there is sidewalk on the left-hand side as you come down from Conestoga. There is no sidewalk on the right-hand side. As he had stated, you know, there's an old roadway, which is people's front yard, which is parking. So there is no current accommodation on that side of the street. And I believe that's why the planning commission was okay with just keeping it on the, on the other side. As Commissioner noted, I don't know if, if the board so, A, would, would want the sidewalks, that's great. Or do you want to request a fee in lieu of, of some sort that you could use in Garrett Hill? I don't know where that would be automatically, but, and that could be worked out. They could give us an estimate of what sidewalk would cost, and the board could request that, those funds.
Thank you. That's helpful. All right. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, I just have one more question, and you may not have the answer. The house immediately adjacent to this property, what is that setback?
I do not have that.
Is that the largest? Is that like the 48 feet versus?
That is the largest immediately next. So further down the street, some of the original houses have been redeveloped-
Yeah.
...and are much larger in scale. And it seems like the larger development is moving up the street as these houses get redeveloped. Or they are being added on primarily in the front. I think largely because there is a sewer line running behind them. They cannot develop rearward. So the houses, as they have additions, are moving forward.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions, comments from commissioners or staff? Any questions or comments? It is a caucus. I wouldn't generally take a public participation, but if there's anyone here that would like to ask a question or, or speak to this, you're welcome. Come on up.
Thank you. My name is Samuel Horsey. I live at 52 Wentworth Lane. My wife and I moved to Garrett Hill in 1986. And, but unfortunately, she has passed, so I'm just there by myself. Questions that I have is, what's going to happen to the fence that's on Summit as you turn into Summit from Garrett, from Conestoga Road? There's a tree that's at 26. I would like to know what's going to happen to that. Summit and Wentworth used to be a cul-de-sac, and then it was made a thruway. What year, I don't know. It happened before we moved Sidewalks from, say, 28 to the end of the street, there is none on Wentworth. Summit has sidewalks. I think that's all the information I can give you.
Thank you. If you want to work on the answers to the fence question and whatnot and bring it back to us, that would be fine. I, uh-
Yeah, I'll find out from the client.
Thanks.
So Mr. Davis, perhaps we could meet and go over stormwater management and a few of the items brought up here tonight?
Yes.
As, as relates to the sanitary sewer easement?
So as it relates to the sanitary sewer easement, we could reduce the size of that stormwater management system. As we mentioned, it is oversized, over compliance. We could lengthen it out. We were trying to keep it away from an existing tree in the backyard from its root system. We could shift it over, which would impact that tree. But we are only proposing to remove two trees, so we do not get hit by the requirement we are allowed to take down more trees as it currently stands. So the primary objective of that was to maintain the trees.
So Mr. Davis, I was thinking perhaps we keep it the same size, but it becomes more linear?
We could do that.
Right. And as opposed to, we like, and we thank the developer for the extra stormwater management, and I think that's a great thing. But, you know, maybe we go towards the property line, it becomes a longer linear system versus the, the more rectangular one it is now.
We could definitely do that.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will see you at a future meeting. In fact, we may see you very shortly here. All right. Next up is item C, Resolution 2024-86, Preliminary Final Minor Land Development Approval for 786 Church Road, which is otherwise known as Chanticleer, Lot Consolidation. Could I have a motion, please?
Sure.
And a second. Second by Commissioner Mulrooney. When you're ready. We heard once, so you just give a brief synopsis, that would be great.
Yeah, as an overview, this plan is to consolidate three separate parcels into one single parcel under the Chanticleer organization. Currently, the parcel, as identified as parcel C, was under a trust at the time the survey was conveyed to the Chanticleer organization, and we are proposing to consolidate all three parcels into one ownership. No development is proposed.
So a single deed, a single owner-
Correct.
-at that point. Great. Any commissioner questions, comments?
Is the whole property, all the parcels, are they tax exempt?
Yes.
All of them? Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Any public participation on this question? Seeing none, I would call for a vote. All in favor? Aye, unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
Not that you're doing anything, but you'll have one big parcel. Item D is Ordinance 2024-04, Adoption, Amending Chapter 280 of the Radnor Township Code zoning. Mr. Rice, you want to start us off on this one?
Yes. The, what's in front of the board is a proposed zoning amendment, which was introduced at the last board meeting. There were a couple revisions that were approved by the board at that meeting, and that's what's been advertised. I can walk through each one of these sections. You should have a, a copy of the ordinance in here that in your, at least in I legislate, which shows what was changed between the last board meeting and, and tonight. So, section one-
John, can you, can you identify the name of that document so we can go to-
Yes, it's the, because there's two of them in here. It's the 62024 WBOD and Conditional Use Amendment. So if you look at that, Commissioner Mulrooney, you'll see it, what was added is highlighted in yellow in that draft. So, section one is, was an amendment of the building height that's had to do with elevator housing, stair towers, and other equipment on top of primarily flat-roofed buildings. So when it was brought in front of the board at the last meeting, there was a, a request to distinguish multifamily buildings of greater than 10 dwelling units and then of 10 or less. So what was added to the draft was to include multifamily along with institutional, commercial, office, and industrial building of greater than 10 dwelling units. Those structures on the roof would not be included. They, and then the other thing that was added for multifamily buildings of 10 dwelling units or less, those structures on the roof would be included in measuring the building height. That was the only change that was discussed and approved and then advertised. And I think, I think we can blame Barron for that one. I think he raised that issue. Thank you, Mr. Gemmer. The, section two of the ordinance is the same as it was introduced, has to do with on-street parking and expanded or redeveloped buildings. I think we had a discussion, Mr. Kachansky can address that, in terms of why that was something that was added to this.
Sure. Thanks, John. The, over the last few years, the township has seen kind of an increase in variance requests to the zoning hearing board for expansions of uses and changes of uses in the WBOD. So this was something that we thought was a good amendment to reduce those number of applications going in front of the zoning hearing board, since Wayne is primarily built out and the ability to add new parking is extremely, extremely limited. So this is just try to clean up the ordinance a little bit and resolve those cases.
Section three of the amendment modified the special use areas and the conditional use considerations by adding a new paragraph 13. And paragraph 13 incorporates the site factors and impact factors, which the board can consider in any decision, whether it's an approval, approval with conditions, or denial. And, and that's what was added to that. Section four of the ordinance also had to do with the special use areas. The setbacks, the side and rear yard setbacks, the maximum pervious coverage were increased, and the height of the building was defined as 45 feet or four stories. The board might recall, this was a lot of discussion surrounding those regulations that are in the existing code with the 60 West development. So those dimensional criteria would be changed. Section five of the ordinance would require for any conditional use application to provide for at least documents, sufficient sanitary sewer capacity at the application stage. Section six of the ordinance is something that also came up during the various conditional use hearings. It would permit a landowner who had a piece of property to have only one conditional use application in effect at any time. So until that would be finally decided or built- So until that would be finally decided, or built, or approved, or denied, or appealed, and the appeal would be finalized, that's the only conditional use application that can happen on that property. And then the, section seven was extending the expiration period for zoning hearing board special exceptions or variances from six months to 12 months. Because what has happened periodically, you get your zoning hearing board approval and nobody builds within six months, very rarely. So those applicants are coming back to the zoning hearing board, we have to hold hearings, there has to be decisions. So 12 months upon, and this was Mr. Kachansky's recommendation, makes a lot of sense, and that's the only change in that section. So it's been advertised for a hearing tonight and for a possible decision by the board.
Thank you very much. So I have to admit that prior to this being introduced, I had not, just before that, watched the planning commission meetings. Since have done that. They originally addressed this back at the beginning of June, at which time section two and section four were not recommended. And then they remet just last week, at which point section two was ultimately recommended, but section four was still not recommended. And I just wanted to be sure that everybody who, like me, hadn't looked at the planning commission meeting, knew that. They had a couple of comments about section four being sort of a tact, tacked together set of parameters that seemed to be rather random, I believe was how it was phrased. That the numbers weren't necessarily aligned with any other numbers in the code, but, I don't know. So, so they were complaining about that. Just wanted people to be aware.
So are these all being proposed to be voted on as a whole, or would we look at them by section?
Well, the planning commission divided it up and passed one, three, five, and the rest immediately. And the first time it was heard, they were thumbs down on two and four, and the second time it was just four.
Right, so are we talking about all of them, or are we talking about them individually? This group?
It's written as one ordinance for passage, so you're asking us to vote?
On the whole?
On the whole thing.
I think if we wanted to...
But with one denial from the planning commission, and we vote to approve, that feels that we're going against their recommendation, is that what we're suggesting?
That's what would be, if we, if we did it as it is right now.
And the, the section that the planning commission has an issue with this time is section four, which has the increased dimensional requirements in the special use areas. And I think that came out of the, the hearings that were held for 60 West. There was an issue with the mass of the buildings, the setback. They ultimately agreed to push the building back further than what the code permitted. They did push the building back, so, and, and the impervious cover. So you're increasing the front yard setback to 50 feet, side and rear to 20, the impervious to 75, and then the height. So it was out of that, James, it, I think, I'll give Jack Larkin credit for writing those dimensional criteria, but it was, it made it more restrictive with the idea that you're going to reduce the mass and the size of, of the building and the coverage on the lot. And, you know, I'm not sure why the planning commission is opposed to that, you know, but they were opposed to it.
I talked to the chair of the planning commission earlier today, and he had an idea that was so good that I'm pretty ticked off that I didn't have it. His position was, and we were speaking specifically about height, because that was one of the major issues that residents came to us about on the 60 West application. We looked at the WBOD maximum height, it's 42 feet and three stories. So you can get three stories, they may not be higher than 42 feet. The number that I came up with was 45 feet, because I've got 10 fingers and it's 10 less than 55, which was the previous number. So they're right, it was more or less random, but I figured bring it down by 10 feet. His suggestion was make it 42 feet, but you can still have four stories. And that way, from the resident perspective, the building height is no taller than what you would be able to build anywhere else in the WBOD, so you're not getting anything that's taking something away from residents. But from the developer's perspective, you can have four stories, as opposed to the three stories that you're limited to in the rest of the WBOD. So you still get a cookie, you can still put the additional density there, you're just not impinging on anybody else's view shed. I thought that was smart, and if the board has the appetite for it, I'm certainly happy to bring this back. I do think we'd have to re-advertise, because we're changing the height.
45 feet to 42 feet?
I'm perfectly happy to be contradicted, it's only three feet.
So I have an additional issue with the way it's drafted on that section, and it may be cured by what Jack was just saying, but the way I read it, at 45 feet or four stories, it doesn't say, and whichever is less, right? So I can imagine 20-foot vault ceilings, four stories up, you've got an 80-foot building. So I would like it qualified either 45, four stories, or whatever is under, or never to exceed 45 feet, like some qualifier that doesn't allow you to get those vaulted ceilings for four stories up.
Sure.
Yeah, it could just say exceed 45 feet, or exceed, not to exceed, basically, 45 feet, or not to exceed four stories. No, that wouldn't do it either.
No, that wouldn't. That'd be the same as what we're looking at.
Yeah, is it, would an and do it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's either an and instead of an or, or after the comma, you add some qualifying, like whichever, you know, whichever is higher, whichever is taller. Sorry, lower. Less than, sorry, flip that.
All right, any other commissioner comments or suggestions? So, Mr. Rice, what do you think?
I have some on another, on another section, but you can...
Commissioner Riley.
The, I just, I just remember when they were planning, or doing, doing the Wayne District over plan or whatever, and there was somebody in the back who used to sit with Sarah and Joe, and his store, Joe's Place, sorry, it's not, his name isn't Joe, Joe's Place, and his spot is away from the road, and the plan was that when new buildings come in, they're going to be towards the road and parking in the back. And I think that's what they're trying to do, when they had this 25 that we're switching to 50, the setback.
But Joe's Place wouldn't be in, this is only for the special...
Sorry, yeah, I understand, I just remember, it was Marty Castelli used to come to all the meetings, and they talked about all the buildings moving front. I know this is just in the special spot, and I don't mean Joe's spot or whatever. Like, those numbers, they were trying to make it, they had reasons for, for doing it, even though in 20-plus years, nobody ever has used one of these special things, whatever. So maybe this will help. All right, thanks.
I do, just on another section, going to section one. I'm still, so is there, is there a written exception for a person needing an ADA access? So my, I'm thinking of a, of a single-family home, a person develops a mobility issue, wants to put in an elevator, and their home is designed such that they would need something on the, on the rooftop. Is there something that allows a person to do that on their private property, that's a single-family?
If, if it's an ADA issue, because we've had to come up with other zoning requirements, we're required to accommodate that. We would send, I think typically, they go to the zoning hearing board with a recommendation just to, because it's a zoning variance, but it's an accommodation, which is recognized, you know, in the law. And zoning hearing board would get the recommendation from the township, this should be approved, and they would get it that way. They'd get relief from that height requirement.
So is that just in practice, or is that in, in the, do we have that codified somewhere?
We, we do not, but, but...
Should we?
Yeah.
I mean, we can, I can, I'm going to re-advertise this anyway, so I can add that, but, I mean, the federal law on ADA is, you know, on those types of zoning issues, you have to, we don't have an accommodation policy on, on ADA. You know, there's all types of accommodation policies that you can have. So, but I can certainly add that to there, to make sure that that's covered, so there's no question down the road.
I think so. I, I would like to see some language just referencing that we accommodate according to the ADA.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that, let me just ask you, because one of my neighbors did this, was a 90-year-old mother. So the elevator shaft, which is in the, goes into the, you know, if you open it, you go in, it opens in the dining room, and it's in the middle of the driveway, and its height is, it probably just about the same as the peak of the house, you know, so the historic district? Is the height not, the height's not a problem then? Right? Is equivalent to the peak, because she lived on the third floor?
Yeah, not in that situation. We're, we're dealing with flat roofs, I think, with resident, that people then want to put their elevator shaft and a tower on top of the flat roof. And we're generally prohibiting that in residential districts, because it exceeds, you know, the building height. But we're going to make an accommodation for someone that meets the ADA standard. But on anything other than a flat roof, it wouldn't come into play, right, Kevin?
Typically, for the elevator, in these cases that we've been talking about, is to get up to the flat roof, because the flat roof was usable space. We do have plenty of homes in the township with peaked, swept roofs with elevators that do comply. Typically, the, the ridge of the, the roof is, is a lot higher than you would need for the elevator shaft anyway. So the midpoint of that swept roof would come into play there.
And once there's been a, a waiver of any kind, you know, my example, somebody needs an accommodation and we ask for zoning to approve, does that remain with that house forever, or is it only when the person who needs the accommodation is there? Is there a requirement to knock it down when you're done?
No, it, it runs with the land.
That's what I thought, thank you.
Yeah, special exceptions, variances, they, they'll run with the land, unless you have something in the code that says, you know, they go, they go away for some reason, but, but it'll stay.
Commissioners, we haven't had many. There's one that I can think of, was an accessory structure, detached garage that they put in, and it had to violate steep slopes, repairing buffer, and the front nerd setback, but it was an accessibility issue, so the zoning hearing board did grant them that accommodation.
Okay, any further commissioner comment? Mr. Kachansky, did you have anything else to add? I know this is your forte.
No, this was, you know, it was kind of a collaboration of different sections throughout the code that needed to be just updated and tweaked, and I think John did a great job summarizing those, and the ordinance that was in front of you, we tried to make a little bit more visible in terms of the changes, and added those things back in there, so nothing further.
Perfect, thank you. Any public participation? Seeing none, even Barron? Mr. Rice, how should I do, should I table this and then you re-advertise it?
Yeah, I would just motion a table and re-advertise the ordinance with the new revisions to it.
Okay. So could I here, or I will make a motion to table this and re-advertise it with the amended section of section four? And the amend, is that, how about, where's your ADA stuff? Section one, thank you, I couldn't find it. And the amended part of section one. Do I have a second? Thank you. And all in favor? Aye, we're tabled, all right. I believe that was the last of our business agenda. So reports from board liaison. Seeing nothing at summer, most boards aren't meeting. Any new business? Any old business? Any final public participation? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? And a second? All in favor? Aye. All right. We're adjourned.